This is going to be a generally tedious meeting until the very end, but I don't want to miss anything, so I'm recording.
Absolutely. So this is a public hearing? We are now going to open it up for a public hearing.
Buenas noches otra vez. Tenemos los que tenemos más de cinco años viniendo a las puntas que el fondo CDDG paga a las señoras que cruzan. En la escuela Elizabeth he pintado las señoras que cruzan a los niños y he estado muy cerca de que haya varios atropellamientos. El costo de las señoras es mínimo, se me hace que son 33 mil dólares al año y el costo de mantener al call enforcement es muy caro para que lo saquen del CDDG. Yo propongo que ese costo de call enforcement lo paguen mediante una agencia y que venga del General Fund y que el CDDG se use para la seguridad escolar, que muy mal que hayan quitado a las señoras que cruzan cuando entran los niños a la escuela y cuando salen.
Buenas noches de nuevo. Yo también quiero que el CDDG lo aloquen para la gente que cruza la calle, las personas que quitaron, se las vuelvan a poner. Que en vez de usarlo mucho para otros negocios ustedes quieren, que los pongan para los baños, todos los baños, dejaré que ocupan, que los renueven, más bien que los sumen y que los vuelvan a hacer nuevos, están los dejo. Para que ayuden a las casas de la gente, que la que ocupan ayuda para que renueven sus casas, para que no se les caigan los techos. Tienen que hacer eso para que el dinero que usted ha usado para el beneficio de la comunidad, no para el beneficio de ustedes si se lo malgastan. Este dinero viene del estado. Esto tiene que administrar bien. Por favor regresen las personas que cruzan a los niños. Sí, buenas noches otra vez. Sí, es muy importante que tomen en cuenta eso que te lo estoy diciendo desde... Porque yo tengo a mis niños en la L en Ochoa y tengo el Park Avenue y ahora me di cuenta que la Elizabeth está igual. No tenemos nadie que cruza los niños en la calle, ha habido varios accidentes, ustedes se han dado cuenta. Y es algo muy importante que ese dinero que entra, que tal vez que se pueden distribuir para más otras necesidades, lo puedan hacer. Tomenlo en cuenta y muchas gracias.
They're letting them clap finally. Jeez.
Buenas noches a todos. Necesitamos de emergencia y cuiden la calle clara porque ya la largaron allí como una pista para correr carros. Cuarentas, cincuentas, treinta y había mil accidentes, había muerte. Quisimos un policía que sea ahí de vez en cuando porque cuando miramos allí al del moro Saico, no se sabían cuándo, donde, dónde, dónde la gente andaba medio así con cuidado. Ahorita ya de la Clank a la Aister, fuera nuestra carrera, por favor.
Buenas noches otra vez. Yo también estoy de acuerdo que dirigen ese dinero para apoyar a las personas que nos ayudan con los niños a las escuelas. De hecho, lo que tendría que hacer es ayudar más porque no todas las escuelas tienen. Mi hijo, mis dos hijos, mi nieta están en el Ochoa, ahí no hay nadie. Son voluntarios. El San Avenue también es la misma situación. Entonces pueden dirigir el dinero para apoyar a las escuelas. Otra cosa, si ese dinero lo pueden utilizar en los parques, yo tengo ya más de dos años pidiéndoles que abren la luz del center de Quiripar. Hasta ahorita no han hecho nada con el relaje de ese center. La gente tiene que retirarse porque el parque lo mantienen a oscuras. En estos días he mirado que tienen encendida las luces del parque, del soccer field, pero el center está a oscuras. Hasta ahorita nadie se ha preocupado por ese problema. Como me digo, más de dos años pidiéndoles que abren la luz. El sistema ya está, si intervinan las fallas que tengan. Gracias.
Okay, we have one, twice. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up order of discussion. Councilmember Sanders.
Thanks Mayor. Question, can we pay crossing guards with CDDG money? I already know the answer, but for the public.
That's a wonderful question. So there's a few factors to consider here. Obviously, yes, you can fund it. The only issue that we face and we face members have is that CDDG monies when it comes to public service programs, there's only a 50% cap for public service programs and that does not include unallocated money. Meaning monies that were not able to be expended from the year prior are not counted as part of the 50% cap. It's solely the current allocation. So for example, this year, and I don't have the staff before in front of me, it's approximately, let's say, $350,000. So there's about $58,000 worth of public service monies available for public service programs. So what that means is, if there's, say for example, $33,000 that needs to go for crossing guards, that means that of that $58,000 of currently programmed for food distribution or senior services, that that $33,000 will have to come from that amount. And that is not a city imposed requirement, that is a federally funded program requirement. So there's really nothing you can do about that. In terms of what you can do, maybe to go back into council and look at the general fund or you can pull monies from a currently existing project, which again you would have to offset through monies from the general fund. But just know that as you start allocating monies towards it, if you do decide to use it for crossing guards instead of say food distribution or senior services, you're going to be wrapping this particular money with federal guidelines. Whereas you could have just used general fund monies and have best, and have more flexibility. Now I know that city manager has some feedback with regards to the crossing guards, not for him. If you would like to discuss that, we'd be out of your time, but that's essentially what we're looking at right now. It's $58,000 of our little public service programs. Obviously that distresses the council money too, so go about allocating that money, but right now it's currently taken up by food distribution and senior services. So it has to come from other ways to project.
Thank you for that explanation. So for the $58,000, we can only use it for two certain... Well, we can use it for whatever we like, right? But we chose it right now for food distribution, our monthly food distribution every month, and for senior service. So we have $20,000. So if we want to allocate money for crossing guards, we have to reduce it from somewhere else, right? So I'm not going to vote on this item. I think this item should be dealt with the new council members coming in. I know my understanding is CDDG is putting up with the two, the two years. And it's always a discussion every year, same issues, same discussion. So I'm going to be, I'm going to abstain here. I'm not going to be voting on this item. I would like, hopefully, my colleagues or meteors just pass it on to the council members that are coming in. So that's it. Thank you very much, Jeff.
I want to address the crossing guards. I was actually brought up a few months ago. Obviously, I'm kind of a junior member here. We were able to broach a partnership with the school police department, so there is actually extra patrols. Someone actually presented it. I know there's a lot of new places here. But the school police department is actually controlling our schools and ensuring that no speeding and making sure that we're regulating everything in partnership with our sheriff department. So obviously, we did listen to you and we are working on adding more patrols. Obviously, I think the police officer is a lot more helpful than a crossing guard, but I see the benefit of both. And so just want to make sure the community is aware of that partnership and it's there.
Okay, so one of the things, it's again, right, there's limited funding for a lot of services that we want. While one of the things I want to bring up is, is we only have fifty something thousand dollars and it's already for senior services or for distribution. So if we want to fund CDDG, which we don't have to fund the crossbars from CDDG, but if we would, then either the senior services would be sacrificed or a food distribution. But again, also another thing that you want to consider is that it doesn't have to come from CDDG. Another thing that maybe most of you, most of the older generation is opposed because of moral position is that we do have cannabis benefits fund. Not one is...
Yeah, they all love the mayor. Want an idea, don't they?
...$70,000 a year and it's precisely to add additional services and resources to the community. So if the new council wants to, they can consider the crossguards as coming from that new community benefits fund. Again, it's supposed to be for the benefit of the community and that's where the structure is put. So doesn't necessarily mean, what I think is the current services are essential and they are a need to the community right now, to the seniors and the people that come and get the free food. The food distribution is also a need, right? Eating is a huge, it's a huge need and I know the seniors will have a very limited budget, so I don't think neither of those should be sacrificed. And I think that now an alternative revenue source is there and it's there for a reason and this is one of the reasons to my opinion.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Moving on, well, I'm going to go ahead and is there a motion to see councilor Vidal to consider this analysis? One bar staff, single doctor, resolution number 1863. And that's it. There's a motion. I'll look. There's a second by Vice Mayor. We're going to vote on this.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Markovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Hey.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Eric Garcia?
Yes, looking passes. Moving on to eleven feet. The consideration of adoption of resolution number 1863. This is going to be presented by our community development committee.
Actually, it will be presented by a legal counsel?
By a legal counsel, Glenn.
Michael Fong. So Glenn Calasada, special counsel for cannabis matters. The matter before you is a resolution requesting clarification of the ordinance 673 while as the development agreements that were approved by this council. Resolution is the resolution of intent and understanding of this city council in the sense that this is the city council that approved and adopted the ordinance, the annual ordinance 673 as well as each and every one of the development agreements included tonight. Last month, the couple approved operators requesting clarification of the scope of their licenses and permits under the, under the development agreement and under the ordinance 673. And that is because there were changes in state law at the regulations level for the Bureau of Cannabis Control. The Bureau of Cannabis Control has eliminated the restrictions with respect to how cannabis businesses can do business with each other. Prior to January of 2018, conditional licenses, licensees could only do business with other conditional licensees. However, there was a change in regulations, those are pointed out in the resolution, and that eliminated that restriction. So now, M licensees can do businesses with A licensees, including adult use. I was requested to look into the legislative history of ordinance 673 into the language in the development agreements and also the scope and purpose for the passage of the ordinance. And the language there indicates that state law was not intended to be frozen in time as of September of 2017. In September of 2017, operators were restricted to doing business with only other M licensees. But the language of ordinance 673 defines state law to include amendments, adoptions, changes that were expected to occur in the future because it was also understood that proposed regulations were coming and were about to take place as of January of 2018. And that's exactly what happened. So the development in the language as well as the language in the ordinance 673 doesn't appear to me to restrict the operators to do business only with other M licensees. And the proposed regulation, the proposed resolution indicates that in section two that the proper implementation of ordinance 673 permits operators to transact business with their state licenses to the extent authorized under state law. If that's not the case, what you would have is Caddahe operators would be limited to doing businesses only with M licensees whereas operators throughout the state would be allowed to do business with M or A. And that would put Caddahe operators at a severe competitive disadvantage. So for that reason, compromise would require or would allow for that. And it also indicates here that the, there's nothing, that this, I understand, teaches in place the restrictions that's in the ordinance already, that prohibits dispensing or sale of cannabis products at the project site without further authorization from the city. That's how we've been fixed. So the request from the operators is they don't want to be deemed in default on day one for having to do business or if they were just applying to state law, just using their license to conduct business to the extent permitted by state law. And they don't want to be second-class citizens of sorts because every other city authorized a medicinal license fee, he could do business with A license, adult use license fee. So the resolution before you today is a resolution that would, if adopted, express this council's understanding of its own ordinance and also this council's understanding of the development agreements it approved. It is not as a code here. And one other thing I want to make clear is that the resolution only had the force and legal effect of resolution which is subject to change by the new council. So it may very well be changed by means of an ordinance or any other action the future council would undertake. This is a request for the understanding of the council that passed the ordinance. That's all I do.
Okay, that will go ahead and open it up for a public hearing.
Jeez Louise.
How many minutes do I have?
Two.
Ladies and gentlemen, what this council is about to do is disgraceful and shameful. This council is...
Isn't he supposed to be on the dais?
...the original scope of the ordinance that was approved last year to include recreational use marijuana. Last year they promised that this would only be medicinal use. Now they're changing their mind. And this man here, Mr. Calzada, I need to let you know who this guy is. He's A by the city and he said today that if they don't pass this resolution, the marijuana businesses are going to be disadvantaged. The important question is who does he work for and who does he represent? Let me share something with you. According to the Secretary of State's website, this man contributed money to a political action committee, joined with other marijuana businesses from Caddahe to get involved in last month's city council election. So this guy's political. I don't believe that he is representing the city's interests. This man is representing the marijuana managers. He said so just now, that if they don't approve this resolution, the marijuana businesses, the poor marijuana businesses will be disadvantaged. The other problem with your unconscionable proposition today is that it's also illegal. You cannot modify an ordinance through a single reading resolution. That is against the law. What you're trying to do is circumvent the normal protocol of two readings for an ordinance by way of a single reading resolution. And the reason you're doing that is because you know the new council is going to be sworn in and you want to limit the opportunity of the new council to get involved. No quiero porque ustedes no han escuchado bien a la gente de hoy. No queremos más marihuana en esta ciudad. Saying on all of you, if you vote for this resolution, respect the will of the people. We don't want marijuana in our community. We don't want this filth in our community. No queremos esta porquería en nuestra comunidad.
Go ahead. Um, this is the I-Guard. I just am appalled, brother, that you remember five years or six years ago, we had marijuana shops trying to get in and they were basically bribing the council people through oritas and rosy promises and it was rejected standing, but it seems like now we've done a 180. And now you've put a rosy pitch of $700,000 for a so-called new service, which is often too extremely rosy. But as it happened, number one, what kind of system are you in, for marijuana businesses to actually show you receipts? Number two, pass business. Number three, they cannot work with banks. They cannot put money to banks. How are we going to keep track of their records? You have to trust them for the bookkeeping and they know that. So you're not going to give the rosy $700,000. You know, I never thought I would see, you know, good, you know, gobby people turn into, you know, eating by the head or something. Just astonishing. Now, if they wanted to fund local projects, you know, for like a school crossing, you got a city manager, a city attorney, they make upwards of $500,000 in their salary. Cut their salaries in half and go to the crosswalk. They're dying, they're dying to be awarded. And the one, you guys do the right thing, brother, because number two, it's a cash business. Number three, there's going to be predators out there that are going to follow the money and they're going to basically commit crime, robbery, kill people with money. We have $30,000, $50,000 hanging around. I can't believe somebody's going to launder. And they're a lot easier to launder banks. So you better keep that in mind, brother. The criminal element is flooding this community and I really don't think you need to let that go along with the so-called $700,000 that you think you're going to get. Normally that number one, you don't have to house them anywhere. How in the hell are you going to put the audit system to find out exactly what they're giving the city? That's my main question and I want the next day's council to explain that to me.
Hello, this is the Madre de la Casa. For all of the families concerned, after marijuana, for all of the people, they are going to be at a disadvantage. They are not going to be able to get, you know, the business that they would like to get because the state won't be able to sound, adopt marijuana and we only have medicinal marijuana. So what I'm understanding is he's like saying, I want you guys to vote because you guys started it. He's afraid that the new people will say no. And he's not thinking about the disadvantages that the people here will be in. They're all about the money and power and peace. Look inside your heart and do the right thing, please. For once in your life, do the right thing.
Buenas noches, yo también las noches curven a justa la plani, los que aprobaron los tres, cuatro fueron. Y aquí tenemos señores atrás, los que están esperando que el día sí pueden poner la porquería que quieren hacer. Señores, anoche dijeron, ahí, en la Santana, que hasta las muchas de marihuana van a vender. Iban hasta galletas y dulces iban a hacer para todos los niños. No, señores. Eso lo dijeron anoche y hoy estaba presente con otra, con otra personalidad, la de Cortina. ¿Y eso qué, qué significa? ¿Qué significa para ustedes eso? Ahí está, ya dijo la comunidad, sin vergüenza, pero sin vergüenza. Y señores, coman cerrando la conciencia, no, ya no deje esta ciudad más podrida de lo que está. El pueblo, todo, el pueblo de Nacer aquí ha habido tres muertos y era la ciudad más tranquila. Era la ciudad número 44, la más tranquila. Allá están las listas, pobre gente que está llorando. Como no hay gente que llora, y los otros dos de San Fe, ahí les vale. Pero los que estamos aquí, pues todo está un viento. Ah, yo creo que así, a siempre baja la cabeza para no saber nada de esto, porque él es el... El que ha llevado toda esta corrupción a esta ciudad. Gracias.
Hay un stigma, hay un stigma contra la marihuana. Hay un stigma contra la marihuana porque hay personas aquí que les gusta tener tíos y tías que se emborrachan todos los fines de semana y las actuales son casados, casados, muchas veces, hasta hoy.
I don't think they like what he's saying.
...de California votaron sí en la proposición 64. Aquí no está pasando nadie legal. Cero personas en la historia han muerto de marihuana comparados millones de cigarros, millones de alcohólicos. Y eso es, eso es la verdad y eso no es una mentira. Como les digo, es la ley, es la ley. Las personas quieren usar el miedo. Por eso vos apoyaste a Pedro, que soporta un Trump, que soporta... Y luego regresaron los racistas, Arthur Soper, aquí otra vez. Arthur Soper, Arthur.
What the hell's going on? I heard my name, I don't know why. Jesus. They're clearing the room, I don't know why. What city are you in? Torrance. We actually passed a moratorium on marijuana shops. We don't allow them. Even though it's, it's now against the law to do that, but we're still holding on. I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on, but we're going to wait. I don't know, I heard my name mentioned, and then, I don't know, all hell breaks loose. Is this, is it cleared for good? For good? That's it? Wow, that was fast. Hey. Hi, who are you? What's your name?
Alfred.
Alfred, okay. Arthur.
Arthur, good to meet you, finally.
Okay. Oh, great. We do have to leave, unfortunately. Okay, I did not disrupt this meeting. Okay, so I don't know what the hell happened. Sorry, Alfred, nice to meet you. I'll give you, let me try this, well, I, I don't know, I'm like worried about my safety, so I'm giving it on. Let me give you my card. Great. Good, you live here?
No, I live in, uh, Walnut Park.
Walnut Park, okay. Oh, right there, I have friends in that area. Okay, oh no, I'm leaving, don't worry, believe me, I'm in full compliance. Jesus. I know. Okay, like, just for the record here, I didn't say anything, I didn't do anything. I didn't, you know. What the hell was that? Hi, Mario, how are you? Downey's looking really nice. It's like a second home to me. I can't get out. I don't know what's going on, but I'm trying to get out of here safely. Okay. Well, at least it'll be a quieter night, I guess. Sorry. Make sure to turn that in. Don't, don't leave it that. I've done that so many times. Okay. Trying to get out of here. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I can't get out. Hi. Is you still okay to hug me? ¿Cómo estás? I'm okay. I know. What the hell happened? You know, you know, okay, not my fault. I did nothing. No, you say nada. Not, not great. Can I sit down? That seems really unfair. They throw everybody out, and you didn't disrupt the meeting, and... Hi, how are you? Somebody needs to tell me what happened, because I don't understand what happened. Who's they? Oh, right, right. Oh, you want the new council members? Okay, um. One, Arthur, nice to meet you. You know, it sounds to me like they're just bitter. Are they taking away your? Is this a friend? Congratulations. Well, I'm glad you did. I'm, I'm a little, maybe because you're about to enter the new city council, woman, you think you could maybe talk to the sergeant-at-arms to maybe reverse the... Can you do that? Could you talk to them to like, I don't know, let everybody back in? Why don't you, and who else got elected? And is the other person here? Why don't you three be the leaders that you are? And ask them to let everybody in? This is not fair. You did not disrupt the meeting, he didn't, she didn't, she didn't. This is not fair. This isn't fair. They didn't disrupt the meeting, so why are they being thrown out? So for those of you who are jumping in right now, uh, this one guy, Eden, literally lost his blog and started screaming at everybody in the city council chambers. And, uh, people got really upset, and, uh, so right now, the city council decided to throw everybody out. Okay, so what I can tell you is that the guy was standing at the podium, and he started to rant about me, and I don't know why. And then all hell started to break loose. Uh, people got really angry, and they started to shout at Eden, who disrupted the meeting. Now, what I find interesting is that they haven't arrested him. They haven't cited him for disorderly conduct, or, you know, uh, disrupting a meeting. I just find that really interesting. I'm, everybody, we need your prayers right now. I don't know what's going on.
Hello, can we have quiet, please? Okay. Uh, Mayor Garcia has a few things he wants to talk to you about. Wants to say to you, to know how things are going to go. Uh, and if you could just please, in a bracket, you can listen, but we don't have any loudspeakers or anything.
Quiet!
So this will just be what you can hear from his voice, okay? So here we go. All right, everybody, this is a governmental proceeding. It's very important that we respect the rules of decorum. We respect each other the way we want to be respected. I don't care about what position you are, whether you're Republican, whether you're Democrat. What we don't do is attack each other and speak over each other. I was just advised by legal counsel that we can have the room cleared, and we can proceed with city business. I said, you know what, I'm not going to allow that. Do one final warning. We'll let you guys back in and respect the rules of decorum. Everyone is allowed to speak. Everyone was given two minutes. You can say whatever you want, as long as it's not profanity. But respect, though, that person's, uh, two minutes, and they will respect yours.
Agree, let's get, let's go in.
Thank you.
We agree. Let's go in.
Let's get the, the real swearing.
So one more outburst of what we just had. We will just clear the room indefinitely. Let's not do that. We have a, uh, a swearing-in ceremony. It's already clouded. So let's just respect each other, please. Thank you.
Wasn't me. No, that's right. Thank you. I should get a, I should get a medal. I'm, I'm accused of something I didn't do. Well, that's not the first time this year. Hey, how are you? Who are you?
I don't care.
Okay.
You're Arthur, though?
Yes, I am.
The infamous, aren't you?
I suppose. Somebody's really, I must live in somebody's head rent-free. Phil?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Nestor Valencia.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're cleaning things up in that town.
We did, we did.
Has Mr. Rizzo finally lost some weight, too?
I don't know, but we, we just...
Hey, I just made a new friend.
I'm not your friend.
Oh, really?
I don't know.
I haven't paid you enough, I see. Right. Throw him out. Yes.
But I, I listened, but I heard your stuff. I'm hearing your stuff all over the town.
Well, good, absolutely. And in Michigan, they're hearing it now. Sure, that's fine. Well, hopefully I'll change your mind.
But you, you, you...
Michiganders listen, I'm very happy. This guy was very gentlemanly, let me come in. I lost my seat. I lost my seat. Hey, grace is good. I know. It didn't have my name on it, don't worry about it. If someone needs a seat, I'll move. Hi.
All right, order. So I'll go ahead and do this. I want completely restart from the last previous speaker. We're going to proceed with the public hearing. We are currently on public hearing. Item 11B. Eden, take it away.
Um, as I was saying, uh, this, the tactic against marijuana, it's a fear, fear-mongering tactic, from background and, and what he used it as, you know, to overcompensate the, the thing that he still hasn't addressed of him being a Republican Trump supporter. I'm fine with that, but the reason why I'm against that, that he has invited white supremacists, and they're here right now. And I warned this to people, that if he were to get elected, by the way, he was taken off the council for breaking the law. He is back now, and he's Trump supporter, but back here, and this is not a tactic. Now, let's go off the facts, okay? Right now, when we had the recess, we all stepped outside. Nobody had an issue with three men that were smoking cigarettes. Second-hand smoke has been proven causing cancer, causing millions and millions of deaths. And those facts are nowhere compared to marijuana. I don't even smoke marijuana, but the reason why I added a fee for it, because the facts are there. Nobody has died compared to opiates, or, or other prescription pills that people tend to take every day, and it kills millions, and, and causes people to get addicted to alcohol and, and nicotine and, and the pills. And marijuana has actually helped people cure cancer, has actually helped AIDS patients, like, and people tend not to even look at those facts. I mean, just, just try to look at the facts and, and don't go off of fear-mongering, and, and, and people who don't want to address issues of who they really follow. I mean, if you're following a person, a president, who is separating families and killing seven-year-old children at the border, I mean, and, and you, and the person that you voted for still follows and, and looks up to Trump and, and looks up to him as, as he...
This is not a border.
If he was his idol, I mean, you would have reconsidered your vote.
What?
Good evening again, uh, council residents. My name is Valentín Palos Anesquita. And earlier I made remarks regarding marijuana, so I'm going to expand those right here. I'm not Democrat. I voted for Hillary Clinton. And so it's not, it's not about partisan, it's about what the community wants. And what they don't want is marijuana. Uh, the gentleman before me quoted some facts, quote, you know, "There's good many deaths as a result of people being under the influence of marijuana all along the road." So this, this fallacy that he said that no one has died from marijuana, taught to the people in Colorado and other places where there's more data of deaths as a result of people being under the influence of marijuana. So, uh, also, as far... So, also, as far as being the law in California, yes, as a, as a result of Prop 64, but the law doesn't say that every city needs to have a tiny marijuana dispensary. If you go to Dami, if you go to Torrance, if you go to other neighborhoods where the people are more affluent, more informed, and the council, uh, heed the will of the people, that does not happen. Why it doesn't happen here? Because, like I said earlier, you don't have the backbone, and there's so much money that you got under the table, that you're so beholden to those interests, that you're trained not to vote no. I have a lot of friends with the FBI, and they're going to check your accounts, and see where that money came from, the extra money that came from the marijuana interests, okay? And, uh, again, it's about being a good council member, you have to have the backbone, doing the right thing for your community, okay? It's very simple, you have to have the cajones, or doing the right thing, which you don't, okay? And it's not about partisan, or, or Trump, or any of that, of doing the right thing for your community. Thank you very much.
Good evening, City of Cortege. Gosh, my name gets mentioned, and all hell breaks loose, I, I just don't understand. I am from the city of Torrance, and my, my city was mentioned, for the record, you guys allowed people to speak off the topic, that's not acceptable, so that needs to be addressed. Uh, as far, my Spanish is not that great. Yo apono la marihuana in Cortege. Porque yo apono la marihuana in mi ciudad también. I am from Torrance. I would suggest to the residents of this community, and to the next city council, you have the power, pass a moratorium. I will speak to my city council, we have a majority city council that's pro-citizen, as opposed to pro-corruption, like the current one, and perhaps they can join with you, uh, with the new council, and a class-action lawsuit, or some kind of illegal action, to ensure that a moratorium passes and remains indefinitely, so you don't have to have marijuana in your city. I may support decriminalization, but I support every city's right not to have it in their city. I don't want it in my city, and the residents of Cuny don't want it in their city, and that's why three of you are gone. They wanted it out. And I'm just horrified hearing about the corruption and the back dealings happening. Well, good, the room didn't clear out, they listened. Everybody, if you want help with that, talk to me afterwards, I will get you in touch with the city attorney in the city of Torrance, I will get you in touch with my city council members, they passed a moratorium. You should consider doing the same in your own city here. Thank you.